Um, like, it's why. Here. People like the classes that are offered. And I'd say generally, the sense I got was that people felt that there is a good sort of array of electives to take and a good balance of electives and academic courses.
Okay. So this is our slide about community. So there were like a lot of really, really positive comments about the teachers at NHS and the other staff. And I tried to include as many as I could here, but like, there were so many more. And I just think that's important to say. People really love the teachers and then also just like their community of friends. So I think that's great that our students are so happy about that. But I did see like, I put in some negative feedback. It was, I mean, it was just those four that I saw in my section. But the one that I did think was interesting was that someone put as negative feedback was like being welcoming. So I think that is something that we really pride ourselves on in Northampton. But I thought it was interesting that that student didn't find that as a strength.
Okay. So Flex feedback, it was a lot of people wanting more of Flex. So just for anybody that doesn't know, Flex is like our time in the middle of the day. That's kind of like study block, but you can go to any teacher that you are currently taking a class with. And you like non, you're not moving forward in the curriculum. You're just getting help with stuff that you've already been learning. So yeah, I think generally the feedback about Flex was very, very positive. And that's kind of new as of a couple of years ago, I believe.
Yeah. Another thing we got a lot of feedback on was the grading system. So obviously there's been a lot of, you know, changes to the recent grading system. So I think a big portion might be people getting used to it. A common complaint that I saw was just the inconsistencies between courses, right? This is something that we actually, we talked about at the last, at the last presentation that we did. But there isn't one consistent grading policy between all the classes. But instead, each department has its own grading policy and those differ from each other in a lot of ways, different grades. So we're kind of using, it's some, some departments are using like a hybrid standards based grading system. And some of those standards are valued differently. So some classes, a proficient might be an 88, some classes is an 85, some, some it's a 90. And just those differences that aren't very clear or aren't very communicated.
Some just have a proficient range, anywhere from the 75 to 85 range.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then here are some more grading things. People talked a little bit about the embedded, the embedded honors policy, which is just in the math department. Students are in honors, honor students and non-honor students are in the same classrooms. And the math department, I think, has this particularly polarizing grading system. So I think a lot of the grading feedback was about the math department specifically. Okay. And then there was a little bit, but not very much feedback about administrative communication. People feeling like their 504s might not have been honored, or people feeling kind of excluded or, and other things like that. And we don't want this to be like allegations, but we thought we would include it because there was some feedback about that. But yeah, there was very, very little in general.
I don't know. This is just like some, oh, this is just like some positive feedback that I thought I should include. I don't know. Just about probably like library and I don't know.
Yeah. So yeah, there was a lot of positive feedback with this. And I'm glad, we often ask, you know, like for problems. And I'm really glad that we asked what people liked about NHS as well, because it was nice to see that people like enjoy a lot of aspects of, of going to school there. Yeah. I don't know if we have time for questions. I know we're running.
We should, if anybody has questions. You want to stop sharing so I can see the screen? Okay. Member Stein?
Thank you so much for presenting to us. It's really great to see the feedback and the handwriting and the candidness of a lot of the remarks. It's really fun for us to see it as well. I had a question for you about the bathroom situation that you mentioned. And I'm wondering, you know, my understanding is there's been sort of a reset at the school regarding school culture, behavior issues, etc. And that bathrooms as is, you know, included for an area of concern related to that. I'm wondering if you've seen a change in the last few weeks in the bathrooms, the availability or the issues that are going on in the bathroom or any sort of shift yet in how that's going?
Did anybody get, were you able to hear that? Yeah. So he's basically asking whether or not, so like, there was like a reset at the end of the semester. And he's asking whether or not we've seen a change in bathrooms after that time. So I do have an answer to that.
Thank you.
Um, I just, okay. So it's really hard to regulate the bathrooms. And I know that the administration is doing their best to possibly handle it. But I will say, I have only noticed it getting worse. Second semester, the bathrooms are more dirty. And I go in there really often. And just like earlier this week, there was only one bathroom in the entire school, girls' bathroom, that was unlocked. And that's because of vandalism. So it's like, there's not really much they can do if the bathrooms are unclean and unfit for use. So I do understand that. But I will say that since the semester started, I have noticed a difference. And they've been much less clean. And I think the situation's gotten slightly worse, probably prompting that reset being attempted as well.
Yeah, I definitely just have to agree with Zara in that regard. It, yeah, it seems to be steadily getting worse, kind of, and it fluctuates. But I think what happens a lot is that bathrooms get closed for whatever reason, right? They're too messy, they need to be cleaned. And then all the, all that, all those kids who are skipping class or vaping kind of get consolidated into one or two bathrooms. And then the bathrooms that are open go from being just bad and uncomfortable to borderline unusable for someone who's actually trying to use the bathroom.
And just to add on to that, like, they're, they're really unusable. And a lot of times they have so many people in them that it's, there's like two times that are pretty much impossible to use the bathroom in. That's Flex in second period. Second period is when lunches are. And like, it's seriously like 20 people in a bathroom. So very small space.
Thank you for your question.
Do you have any other questions or comments?
I just have one other question about the guidance portion that we mentioned. And I was curious, I was trying to read all the notes. And I, I didn't know if you had a sense, having read them all, if, like, if the issue was there wasn't enough access to counselors, if there wasn't enough counseling support, like what, if you had to describe like the key issues that most students reported, like what, what were they? Because it seemed like there was a lot there.
Yeah, I think a big problem is, kind of like you were saying, is access. And that definitely has to do with the number of guidance counselors. There's, I know that there's very few guidance counselors as is, and that they're very overworked within their regards and they're dealing with their students. And then also, there's the resources for students with IEPs or 504s who get access to counselors who are maybe more for mental health or like stress level stuff. And I know that they're also overworked. And there isn't really an option for people who don't have an IEP or 504 if they want to seek like counseling that isn't related to like a school issue, that doesn't really exist in the school. And it's very hard to go to your guidance counselor because, especially when it's the season of college applications or course selections or anything school related, which is almost always, they always just have a lot on their plate to deal with.
Yeah. And adding on to that, the season of college applications and course selections, like, college applications takes up entire first semester, basically. And then course selection starts like a week ago, like a week into second semester. And kind of the process lasts all the way until the school year ends. So the guidance counselors are like super busy as it is. And seeing anyone for just like immediate support is, it's kind of impossible, honestly, just due to the lack of resources. And they are doing their best. So.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions or comments? I'll just say thank you so much for the thoroughness and the honesty and also just putting everything in context. That really appreciate that. It helps us understand what's happening on the ground. Thank you for being here and for your patience with the technology as well.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, please, go.
If I, if I don't, if you guys don't mind. So we are in the process of doing the strategic plan for the district for the next five years. And there has been a survey that's been released. And so far, I think 48 students have actually completed the survey. So if you all can get the word out that this is an opportunity to, so they've, they've answered this survey. So they can replicate some of those thoughts into the three questions that we have put forward. That would be very, very helpful.
Okay. Yeah, I, we've definitely been trying to do that. I, yeah. I know at the open house, we did a fundraiser. I'll talk about it in a second. But we did have like a QR code. We were telling people to fill it out.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Oh, Member Labonte.
Yeah. Thank you so much for your presentation. I wanted to let you know that I'm going to be taking over the booster club because it sort of was a non-existent this past year. And so I will be reaching out to groups like the Student Union and other places to talk about how we can partner and how we can get students involved, as well as parents and sports teams. So just be looking for my name because I'll be outreach to see how we can work together. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Well, that ends our portion of the Student Advisory Council meeting. Do we need to sign out or do we just go for?
Yes, we do need to do a roll call.
I need a motion.
Would someone make a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Member Gacy?
I second.
Advisory Council.
And Member Hennessy seconds it. Can we have a roll call, please?
Member Gacy?
Yes.
Member Foster Cannon?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Maybe I muted too quick.
Thank you. Member Seraphie Cox?
Yes.
Member Stein?
Yes.
Member Hennessy?
Yes.
Member Labonte?
Yes.
Member Agna?
Yes.
Member Davis?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, switching gears. Good evening. Welcome to the February 15th, 2024 Northampton School Committee meeting. I am Gwen Agna, the Vice Chair of the School Committee. And I will be presiding tonight in the absence of the Chair as this meeting was rescheduled to a time that the Chair has another commitment. I apologize to everyone who has tuned in and hoped that we had started at 6:30 for the regular school committee meeting. We had major technology issues, which is often the case, but this one, these were better, I mean, more than the others, for sure. And we have new screens, but we're not quite up to speed. This meeting is being held both remotely on Zoom pursuant to the modification of the state's open meeting law for the pandemic and in person here in the community room at JFK Middle School. This meeting and all participating will be audio and video recorded. I will begin by asking Michelle to call the role of the school committee.
Member Sherif? Member Gacy?
Yes, present, whatever.
Member Foster Cannon?
Present.
Member Seraphie Cox?
Present.
Member Stein?
Present.
Member Hennessy?
Present.
Member Miller? Member Labonte?
Here.
Member Agna?
Present.
Member Davis?
Present.
Do you have a form?
Thank you. The following members are participating remotely over Zoom. Member Stein and Member Foster Cannon and Member Seraphie Cox. So we will open with our student representative, oh, no, we're not going to open with our school committee norms before. Member Gacy?
We had talked last time about trying to use the norms that we got eliminated in a way that might help reduce the times of our meetings, et cetera. And so we decided, so Member Agna and I worked on them on sort of a scoring system. We came up with zero, four doesn't meet the standards, one partially meets the standards, two meets the standard, or the idea of whatever. So a zero to two thing. We thought that what we could do was take these little dry erase markers that we have and score zero to two on these and then give them to the clerk to tally anonymously. For members who are on Zoom, they could send their tallies to Michelle as well. And then what we would do is for each little section or each little category, we would put the raw tally, like how many, how did it work?
How many for each number?
Add columns to the norms to reflect how many members checked each score and also an average score for the norm. We had agreed we would read all the norms this time, just to get it in our heads. And then after that, we would lift up the lowest scoring norm. And at the beginning of the next school committee meeting, spend five minutes with a timer or three minutes, whatever you want, brainstorming ways that we can improve in this area. Any other questions with that? Oh, should I read these babies? Yes. Okay. So there, the first column is how we communicate. Utilize brevity to use our meeting time well. Watch airtime, speak and listen. If you agree, say so and move on. Two, clarification. If you wonder, ask. Three, come with an open mind. Be open to change based on new ideas or perspectives. Next, respectfully challenge the idea, not the person. Patience, patience, patience. Last one is actively and respectfully listen to, consider, and build on shared ideas and perspectives. The other column is how we work together. Come prepared. Review all folder items. Pass discussions and actions on agenda topics prior to each meeting. Next, focus on students at the center. How does what we are discussing impact all students? Next, agendas are reflective of our goals and are reasonable in scope and time. They include a clear and specific action with accompanying materials. Next one, each of us is responsible for ensuring we clearly understand what we are voting on and indicate when we feel ready to do so. And finally, follow through on committee commitments.
Great. Does anyone have any questions from the committee? I have to look at my Zoom to see if there are any.
I would just say for those of you here that, you know, for this column, do the left side, not column.
Do the right side. Member Stein?
Member Gacy just answered my question by her description. So thank you.
Brevity.
Yes. And we'll leave time at the end to do your scoring before we adjourn. Okay, let's move on. And where is my little script? Sorry. Here it is. Okay. Now we're moving on to the student representative report. Zara Osman, thank you.
Okay. Hi, I'm Zara Osman, and I am the student representative from the NHS Student Union. Okay. So I briefly mentioned in the Student Advisory Council meeting that the Student Union, we held a candle sale and we partnered with Prosperity Candle. It was on the day of the open house, so a week ago today. And it was very successful and very fun. And we're going to be having another candle fundraiser on the first day of March. So yeah, for students this time, not for parents. We just had a fire drill today. It was very cold. But it was probably the most efficient one we've had this year. And I don't know, for my time at NHS, definitely the most efficient one. And as I also mentioned earlier, the course selection process is beginning. And 10th graders have had meetings that I know for sure. I think everyone else in the school has also had meetings. And the ninth graders took their bio MCAS at the beginning of the month. And just half of them, the other half will take it in June. The Black Student Union has been doing announcements with like little fun facts for Black History Month. And I personally have really enjoyed them. They're really fun. And the school musical, is it on March 14th, 15th, and 16th and 17th? So yeah, you guys should definitely go. It's gonna be fun. Spring sports registration opened relatively recently before our previous meeting. And as I think Dr. Bonner mentioned, or no, no, Member Stein mentioned, we had a reset with the beginning of the semester. And that like has included like more punishments with like lunch attentions for skipping. That seems like a harsh word, but repercussions, let's say. So yeah, that's pretty much all the news I have.
Thank you, Zara. Are there any questions or comments for Zara?
Zara, thank you for changing that word, repercussions or interventions.
Yeah, I didn't know what she was.
As opposed to the punitive method there for the reset. And for those of you who are wondering what this reset is, there is a document in which, I don't want to steal the principal's thunder, but it really was to recognize that there's been some challenges. And it wasn't just, just this year, but there's been some challenges and some changes that have happened at the high school. And it's due to the very fact that there's been leadership changes. And, and so even changes in terms of our SROs presence and the focus on restorative practices. And so the reset was a communication that went out from the principal, from the administration, really talking about some of the changes. really talking about some of the changes and how to really address some of the concerns in which were mentioned today. And so that's the document that is being referred to. Thank you for that addition.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, well, we'll move on to our North Hampton High School Spotlight and Principal Wurley. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity. I want to thank Zara and Ellie and Lila for their work with the Student Union. We meet regularly with the Cabinet of the Student Union and always appreciate their insight and their willingness to work with us on thinking about how to make things work better for students. So tonight for our spotlight, I did what a good principal does and punted and sent it over to the video production crew in class and asked Jeremy Whalen, who does a fabulous job with the transcript. If you haven't seen the transcript, you need to find that and take a look at the Weekly News Magazine. And so they put together a five-minute video about North Hampton High School and I'll share that with you now and I'll share my screen and run the video and hopefully this will all work.
When you shared it, did you click on the little tiny box that says, share the audio from the clip? Yeah. So if you unshare your screen and then reshare it, you reshare it on the box, there'll be a dialogue box that pops up and there will be a like a check mark that you can check that says, share audio.
Is your sound on?
Okay, can you turn up your volume?
Turn the microphone, microphone's off.
I don't think so.
Are you muted yourself?
Yeah, if you if you turn down your audio on the, some of the people in the room won't be able to hear, but I, or turn off the mics. I also would offer a solution that someone, a School Committee member who is not in the room could share it that way and I don't think we would have the same CPAC issue.
Unmute. And then your sound should be all the way up so you can hear me now.
College-level content, creative, empathetic, and responsible individuals. North Hampton High School is committed to preparing versatile, well-rounded students ready to function in a diverse local society. We are committed to engaging all students in a range of high-quality educational experiences and opportunities that will assist in the development of necessary skills or becoming knowledgeable, competent, creative, empathetic, and responsible individuals. As a 21st century learning community, we encourage students to be innovative, independent, critical thinkers, and collaborative problem solvers who contribute to the school and the community.
One important part of our mission as a school is to bring students together and help them, help them learn how to be adults. But then really importantly, a lot of the work we do is teaching students how to think. So content is easy to find now if you carry around a computer in your pocket. The question is, do you know whether those answers are authoritative? Can you put together information and create something new? Can you solve problems?
I really enjoy the, many different classes we have, like that students can have not only in the arts, but also like maths and technology and English, just the variety we offer.
We have students who are interested in pursuing a higher education and we have students who are thinking about how to use their high school education as a jumping off point to a career. And we have a lot of businesses in the community that support our internship program. And so we have all kinds of different pathways for students and all the different kinds of learning happening here.
There's two leadership opportunities for students that are really important to the school. So we have class officers who work with the class sizes and really think about the school spirit. And then we also have the Student Union, which is really designed to look at the practices and policies. So they're sort of the, a much more, a much more governance-oriented group. And so they meet, they meet with the administrative team on a regular basis and they bring forward concerns, ideas of the student body and things that they think that they need to be attending to. And it's really a great opportunity for us to hear from and respond to what students experience.
Extracurriculars have been a big part for me, especially being president of the DND Club, co-president of the Ceramics Club, since it gives me a chance to hang out with my friends in a school setting. If you really love making art, but you don't have enough time for it today, we have that extra time during flex and after school to just like do the things you want.
My advice for new students would be try anything and everything you think you'd like. Obviously, like take the classes you need to take, but definitely explore the other classes that like you might not be able to explore after high school.
So when I stand on the stage of graduation and think about what it means to hand a student their diploma and shake their hand, I think about not just the academic learning, but the skills and the attitudes that they're carrying off in the world with them, thinking about the world beyond themselves and being an engaged citizen. I think a big part of our work here is to provide students with skills, knowledge, experiences that they feel ready to do that when they need and take their diploma.
Thank you, Principal Wurley. I feel like we need to clap on that one.
Thanks, Ellie.
Thanks, Ellie. And thanks, Jeremy and everybody else who's involved. I saw Suzanne Strauss's name, too. Great. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments for Principal Wurley? Member Labonte?
I have one comment and one question. I loved reading about the pathways. Thank you for that information. I thought it was fabulous. It's so wonderful to see all that opportunity and and how that works with the community. I just, thank you for sharing that information. I really liked reading it. And then I have a really sort of odd granular question. And that is, I was looking at sort of graduation requirements and it talked about history with the classes needing to be sequential, like American History I, American History II. Does that mean there's a base? Then you have to sort of keep taking American History because I noticed there's very interesting other history classes. Can you, does it have to be sequential, literally sequential, or are you allowed to sort of take a variety to meet that requirement? Okay. Those two. Okay, that other, that last, okay. That's all right. I wondered how how big the sequence was that you had. Thank you.
Do we have somebody else?
Yeah, so we have a little addition.
Great, thank you.
Have heard me speak before. I'm really excited to come and speak about the good work that my department has. Presentation that there's handouts to show you and I'll just go over a few highlights and review with the documents. But so as I was mentioning, one of the big things that we do is support students through post-high school planning and college applications. And so a few, just little numbers, tidbits for you. Seventy-six percent of our students have applied to college this fall. Sixty-two percent, sixty-one point eight percent, applied regular decision. Thirty-eight point two percent applied early decision or early action. There's 1,360 applications submitted by North Hampton High School seniors this fall. A few numbers about regular decision. So the counselors for have written 146 letters for 209 seniors this year. It's actually a student class for us. We have 240 students in the current ninth grade and our average is in between, probably 200, 230 students. About 2,000 submitted to North Hampton High School, said by the North Hampton Counseling Department. That's the number that a teacher would write to colleges. So that number is typically the school counselor. They have any letter written. And then hundreds of letters sent by teachers via the school counseling department. I need to just highlight some of the things that we do that, and if you might not know, if you're a high school student or a grade that we're doing it at. So we do meet with each of our students' group setting at least three times a year. We offer more curated support, both individually and through Flex Block, School Counseling Department, and absolutely Flex Block because it allows us to support students without taking classes. So we help students with college applications, financial aid, do all kinds of different things during Flex. We have formation sessions to provide students who are interested in Smith College courses, scholarships, those kind of things. And then we have the kind of programs, some things we do with the students, doing them during the coming up to the high school and then going to high school beyond. For applications, we work with students applying to community colleges, going to the military, going to work. So we offer various types of support for that, similar to some small groups and individual. We occasionally had some field trips. We, some of the pandemic kind of shut us down, but we've been able to offer field trips last year and this year with the help of the North Hampton Education Foundation and the PTO. Really grateful to their support. And then we do case management as well. There's some things behind the scenes that go on. So we have newsletters. We have a newsletter that goes out every Monday and then we have a huge newsletter for students in grades nine and eleven. I don't know if any of you read Hello Hamp regularly, but I try to keep people updated on what's going on in the counseling department there. So you can hand out some of our most recent newsletters as well, newsletter for ninth through 11th grade. We do have multiple caregiver nights each year. So we have an 11th grade caregiver's night that's coming up on March 25th, 30 PM. And then typically have two caregiver's nights for senior parents. So that's one about applications and one about financial aid. We do a long amount of scheduling. So we have a full building. We have nine students. Pretty steady and then there it's been a rapid increase, except for a brief dip during the pandemic. And we, 291 requests and schedule changes just semester two. So that does not include the fall. 291 requests for second semester. We have lots of new students coming from somewhere from JFK, usually about 65% of our students in the freshman classes from JFK and then another 20, 25% are from private schools, starter schools, homeschool, other places. So I wanted to thank you for helping me with my program. I really appreciate being able to share some points of return with more time, bigger picture.
Thank you very much, Erin. Really appreciate your, yes. So I see that we have a couple of hands up. Member Seraphy Cox, do you have a comment or question?
Yeah, can you take Member Stein first? I have issues going on here.
Okay, Member Stein?
I had a comment and a question. It was really wonderful to see my fellow non-board member Ellie in such a great video that I'm sure he worked hard on and it was just, it was great. So thank you for that and really awesome to see what the students are capable of producing. And my question is about the sort of a couple of the things that have come up in the student reports, you know, and I'm hoping you can maybe give us a sense of what the reset plan is and the messaging around that. It wasn't something that we were able to see or understand. So if you could just give us a sense of what the current reset plan is, that would be really appreciated. that would be really appreciated.
Sure. So a couple of things that we've been trying to address on the numbers. So really the intent is the most being in class. And then there's track actions that we have. So the emphasis has been on having, really focus on making sure that they're in class, staying in class. So thinking about how they manage all the classes, how they manage taking attendance, that they're following through on their role in what happens next to starting, per skipping, and that we can then support them when it gets to administrating. Just a number of things in the hall. So if teachers are really managing how they, and what they allow to come out, making sure that they pass. And it's sometimes simple as keeping doors closed and not having students sit in hallways or leave the classroom groups. Things that have been pretty common. And then they make our ability to know who's actually in class and if they're not in class, if they're not in class, they come in. That's been a big part of really asking the teachers to do their part in keeping students engaged. Another piece then. So that's kind of the main stress of it. And then we've been also working with students. We have ten bathrooms, ten, ten rooms of classrooms in three. We have typically two counselors and teachers. And so it takes two people at least to monitor lunch. So for two hours a day, there's two adults supporting the cafeteria. So it's really limited what we're able to do. So partnership, we usually really take the lead on working with students and keeping them engaged and accountable for being caught.
I'm hearing a lot of comments that they can't hear. So I'm wondering if we may have someone speak. Here's the mic closer. I didn't notice there's comments in the chat.
Thank you. And unfortunately, we're supposed to have the chat disabled, even though it's been a way to communicate. So I'm not paying attention to the chat. But if we could disable it, it's, it does, it's not something we can have at school committee. Anyway, so we need to speak into the microphone. So member Seraphie Cox.
Yes, thank you. I am curious how the high school envisions utilizing the video that you made. I mean, it's, it was great. I echo all of that. And I'm especially thinking about in terms of using it to, you know, communicate to the broader community about the great things happening at the high school.
Yeah, so Lauren Berry, I'm going to get her title wrong.
Coordinator of Family Engagement.
Family Engagement, thank you. Coordinator of Family Engagement has taken the leadership on an initiative to create virtual school tours of each school. And I realized when, when I was explaining this to someone that they pictured that as a camera walking through the hallways. I think what it's actually intended to be is something that expresses what the, what each of our schools' unique character is. So I don't think it'll be exactly this video, but these are a very talented group of producers and they can use this content and other content and put together a piece that would be something that somebody, well, for example, rising ninth grade students and their families, but also students and families considering coming to Northampton could see and just get a flavor of the school. We will, there will be another generation of that video.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
I really love this and I love how you highlighted student voice so much in it. And I also, Karen, with respect to guidance, how important it is to remember, and you recognize this, the work you do. Sometimes it does seem like scheduling and it takes up so much of your time, but the college recommendations for both teachers and counselors, how much teachers and counselors and administrators do outside of that regular school day that really makes students' lives so different. And I think it's so hard to capture Northampton High School because I think it's amazing. I'm super biased, but I really do think it's amazing that you did it in the video without even mentioning sports, which to me is like another fantastic thing at the high school. So I like both Jackson Street and then now. It makes me really proud to be part of the community. My last comment, I'm going to be really quick. Seventy-five percent comes from JFK. And I think that's, I just want to highlight that 25% and how we have, we have to attract that. And how when we talk about budget and a low enrollment, how we have to really remember that and talk about the video and how do we get people to the floor, you know? So thank you.
Thank you. I'd just like to also, just my comment that goes with the student council also, that the fact that people trust and value the adults in the building, that the students reported that, that's really fantastic. I mean, it's hard with the bathrooms and hard with vaping and all that other stuff. But I think the idea that there's this trust and appreciation for the adults is really important and I'm so glad to hear that.
I just want to say, Phil, this evening, thank you for taking the time to spotlight our flagship school and also to recognize one of our associate principals who is sitting beside him, dieting. And that's just a wave. And so thank you for being here. And we do have some of the staff from the high school who is also in attendance. And thank you very much for your time to speak.
Thank you. So those of you who are just tuning in, we are, we started late because of technology issues. And so we're now to public comment. So we'll be taking public comments in person and over Zoom. There is a signup sheet, which I have now, for public comment. I will go through the names who have signed up. For those who are on Zoom, if you wish to make a comment, please use the raise hand feature. Please turn off your videos unless you are a school committee person. You can always submit a written, written public comment, which is equally part of the public record. To do so, please email it to northhampton-school-committee@northhampton-k12.us and it will be sent to all school committee members. Before you begin, please state your name and your city or town for the public record. The school committee does not respond during public comment and it is the public's time to speak. So while your comments should be directed to the school committee, you will understand that we do not respond to them. There's a limit of three minutes per person, unless the language translation or accommodations for a speech disability, speech-related disability is needed, in which case the limit is six minutes. A timer will be set to ensure everyone has an equal opportunity to speak. You have no obligation to use the full time. If you do, after the limit is reached, you will be asked to finish your sentence. The school committee receives public comment for a maximum of 90 minutes. We will begin our public comment with Eric Carlson.
Karen.
Eric.
My hand's turning, it's just that.
Okay, that's okay. No, Eric said Karen.
Yes, thank you.
So my name is Erica Karen. I'm a resident of Hopfield. I teach in this school district. So thank you. I keep hearing from many things inside and outside the school committee that higher ups in the city of Northampton have said that the NTS raises for our last collective bargaining negotiations, essentially being the city budget's pose on NAES. I would like to remind the mayor, school committee, and city council, this was a collective bargaining agreement. This was a contract negotiated and mutually agreed upon by all stakeholders. This is our contract, not NAES's contract. It's everyone's contract. Placing blame one way or another isn't going to make millions of dollars appear out of nowhere. Instead, it pisses the school district against the city citizens. The devastating cuts to education in this city will not bring students to enroll in our school districts. It will increase class sizes, limiting the effectiveness of our teachers and what interventions we can use to assist all of our learners. This in turn will drive families to consider using choice to other surrounding districts or send those families to private or charter schools. I would also like to remind everyone that the reason stakeholders agreed to this collective bargaining agreement was because the educators, and most notably the support staff, were being paid offensively less than almost every other district in the area. As a result, we were losing excellent qualified and invested members of staff because they couldn't always make ends meet on their salary. With cuts like this and the added pressure on the staff remaining, we will have attrition in our employment for different reasons. All of this will simply encourage declining enrollment, which creates a vicious cycle of declining budgets and increased costs. I am not a financial expert, but I do know that families want to move to and enroll their students in schools that can provide the highest level of education and care for their students. We could be one of those districts. This deficit is not the fault of NAES. This comes from the top and the city needs to get creative in how it plans to budget for prioritizing education for the betterment of Northampton as a city and to do what's best first. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next person in person is Jude Russo. Jade, I'm sorry, Jade Russo. Excuse me.
Hello, my name is Chief Russo. I am a senior at Northampton High School and I'm a president of Florence, Massachusetts. There's two things I wish to speak on today, both relating to the budget. And I've heard, I've heard speculation that of the positions that have been said would need to be cut and would need to solve deficit, that there would need to be a guidance counselor cut. I'm not sure how true this statement is, but I would just say that, like has been mentioned, they have a lot of work to do and if anything, they would need more staffing in order to properly better get everything done. And the second I would like to speak on is the Green New Deal for schools. This came to the forefront of my mind when Principal Worley sent out the form two weeks ago about strategic planning for the upcoming five years for the school on how to make the school better. And when I was looking at it, it said, what do you envision for Northampton High School in the next five years? These five main demands of the proposed idea, I think that's a better way to put it, the Green New Deal for schools. Safety, clean buildings, climate curriculum, climate disaster plans, pathways to good jobs, and green health ideals, I think would be great additions to this. So I ask you to support the resolution for the Green New Deal for schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Jade. So if there's anyone remotely who would like to make a public comment, please raise, use the raised hand function. Josh Feldman, you can unmute and open your video. Thank you.
Everybody, Josh Feldman. I'm a parent of three kids in the schools. A first grader, a fifth grader, and a sixth grader. And I'm really grateful for school committee's leadership in a tough year. And connected to the budget crisis that we face, I want to encourage school committee to propose a counter-budget that does not have the existing deficit represented. And in turn, that would allow for city council to have a debate about overall city funding and a public forum for the conversation of if our city priorities are represented in overall city spending. As the mayor shared in the last meeting, this is a national crisis for education where school districts across the country face similar budget challenges. And I'm dreaming about a Northampton that leads the way as a city that is a beacon of hope in a difficult time for public education and models creative solution-making so that our students that you've heard from tonight and others can continue to thrive.
Thank you very much. Gosh, next is Meg Robbins. You can unmute and open your video. Meg Robbins, you're next. You can unmute and open your video. Are you, are you having difficulty doing that? Okay, so let's go to our next person and then we'll come back to you, Meg, if you're still there. We have next is Joella Jada Tarbutton Springfield. Is that correct?
That's a mouthful, yes.
That's great.
My name is Joella Tarbutton hyphen Springfield, like the town. And they call me Jada, those who love me. And I am vice president of the Ward Three Neighborhood Association and also very involved with the, Emily. And actually, I have to tell you, this is my first time coming to one of these school committee meetings. I'm also a part of the Bridge Street, was it council? So I go there and that's how I think I met Josh. And I, last night at a Ward Three neighborhood meeting, councilman-at-large Garrett Perry came to speak. And so I asked a question about the budget and it was somewhat, I would say a little bit scary, what's going on? I have to also say that I am a licensed teacher. I've never taught in Northampton. I've always taught in Springfield. And I've lived here in Northampton almost 20 years. As a matter of fact, I had considered running for city council for Ward Three. So I'm here just listening to what's going on. I do participate, especially February, I do some read-ins, at least with the Bridge Street School. So, and I think I have attended two real talk Northampton things at the JFK and I was very impressed. So right now I'm just a fly on the wall, but a very interested fly. And thank you for letting me speak. And it's good to see some of the candidates who I met this summer, who are on the school committee. Thanks.
Thank you, Joella. Next we have, is Meg Robbins available?
There was a message in the chat that she is unable to mute. I mean, unmute.
Unmute, okay. I'm not checking the chat, unfortunately. So I don't understand why she's...
I'll try to unmute her.
Okay. In the meantime, we'll go to Lila Neale Stuffy.
Can I just speak in person? Is that okay?
Yes, of course. Oh, yes, there you are.
I didn't know there was a signup.
Oh, no, that's fine. Yes, go for it.
Okay, hi, and I'm Lila. I live on Spotsboro Street in Northampton. I got an NCS, student union, and I also serve as the co-chair of Northampton Youth Commission, where we have a lot of discussions about the African-American budget, including with Agna, which are many of our... Very gracious, we saw a paper for that. And so last year, when we were in the school position, but the youth commission, we talked about the dangers of taking money from non-rentable sources. And I also, using money that we don't, we don't always have on our... Creates a hole in the budget that will only get bigger. I mean, I want to think of using this kind of money. Obviously, a lot of problems that are all under control, which are at the state level and then I deliver a budget as said. And as Lila said, for a very, very strong... Pushing to get, to give the school money. I think that's only the way that we can get... That we have some problems dealing with that. But I want to urge the school community to... Non-rentable funds, because it will just make the problems that we have now in terms of funding and moving costs worse in the future. It's going to be painful decisions that have to be made regarding our... Making these decisions make it much more painful for students in the future. And I use... Non-rentable funds, which I've seen in the first few budget, in the plan right now, is dangerous and will hurt our community ultimately. Yeah, yeah. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Lila. Okay, let's see if we can have Meg Robbins. Are you available now?
I just got a message from Meg saying that she may have to co-host me because I still can't unmute.
I don't know. I don't think, I don't know if we can do that. She can't unmute? Is that a problem?
Yeah, that's what she said.
Yeah, and I asked her to unmute, so it's not...
Ask to unmute. While we try to fix this, let's go to Zara Osman. You're here.
I also do not, I know, I always forget the sign up sheet, so I'm sorry. Okay, okay. I am Osman and I am a 10th grader NHS and I am a member of the student union. But I'm speaking for myself, that's why I didn't mention it. My summary? So first of all, I think we all know that these budget cuts really aren't an option. We've heard about all the great things at NHS tonight from both the Council and Spotlight. We've talked about the great teachers we have, great course offerings we have, extracurriculars we offer, all things that make NHS a super special place to go to school. And the reality is that if we keep having the same conversation about budget cuts, you're after your gear with the situation getting increasingly worse, we aren't going to have those things anymore. So we talk a lot about advocacy here in Northampton and I think it's really important that as elected officials, you as a body, really advocate for the students. And I heard that in your meeting norms and I think that there have just been so many great points mentioned tonight about by Josh Feldman presenting a budget to the city council, by Lila Neil Stuffy about working to get more money into our city budget. And I'm not an expert on this, but I'm in meetings about this all the time on school council. Mr. Worley gave a great budget explanation, presentation to us and really outlined it quite well, so I did just want to say that. But it's, these are, these are not an options for NHS to continue to be a competitive school. And I think that Karen really highlighted that as well in her explanation of the cycle that's going on with us losing money to charter schools and school choice. And the class sizes that are increasing, like I've noticed that personally. In my time in Northampton Public Schools, my class sizes have just gone up tremendously. And I think that that's something that is really important that we focus on in the budget is making sure that we can at least maintain the state that we are at now and not keep having the same discussion year over year. So I really, really implore you to advocate for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Zara. Has it been fixed, Meg, for Meg Robbins?
So I have Meg on speakerphone because she still could not unmute.
Okay.
Meg, can you turn down the volume on your... Yeah, she's, yeah, there you go. Okay.
Thank you, Emily. I really don't know what happened with that. It's never happened before on Zoom, but thank you.
Can you all hear her okay?
Yes.
Great. Go ahead.
I'm Meg Robbins, Northampton, parent, grandparent to NPS alums and students, current students. I want to share that I think it's terrific that we're creating a strategic plan to guide our district goals and outcomes for our children's education. The last district strategic plan was developed 16 years ago by a small, majorally appointed group and most of it, including a proposal to explore elementary school consolidation, was not implemented. A quote from that document written during the 2008 recession was eerily reminiscent of our 2024 current budgetary predicament, I quote, "That Northampton Public Schools are faced with an extraordinary challenge to continue to provide high-quality educational services with ever-increasing costs and with drastically reduced revenues," end quote. The opportunity to create a strategic plan we can all own could and should be a critical beacon for the future. I'm concerned, as are many in this city, about how we actively work as a community to do this inclusively and benefit from a whole city's spectrum of lively and thoughtful input in that strategic planning. That the current process has been seemingly exclusionary, even mysterious, is not good for our city nor our children. There are many ways to conduct strategic planning for school districts to learn, share, grow, and create a solid and exciting goals-based action plan. From what we know, this closed-door current process is not one of them. I would ask school committee members, how many of you and your constituents were or are regularly informed and aware of each step of this process, be it agendas or its outcomes? One fundamental understanding of your work is that no member shall retain committee information or decisions that all members don't have. There's no hierarchy on a school committee. As an educational change coach, I've worked with many districts using a national school reform faculty Back to the Future Protocol, which this committee was introduced to last December in a retreat and whose staging questions seem to have been selected for the online survey we have been encouraged to complete if we want to be heard. In my experience, this protocol was never intended to be used as an individual online survey. It's a highly collaborative exercise that fosters great discussions with onsite groups who then have an opportunity to gallery walk what each group has posted and see where there are overlaps and ahas. It is a fabulous, hands-on, discussion-focused way to work with community at the start of strategic planning. It allows us to springboard off what we see and hear. It gets us pumped up about what school can and should be. But using those prompts as an online individual survey, you're thinking, that is the data that will suffice for community input, is not. That 2008 Strategic Plan Committee also shared what I believe our community still embraces, and I quote again, "What we do know is that the economy has become a major challenge. How this challenge will be met remains to be seen. There are many who believe the challenge will be met through the education of our children. The development of a strategic plan is essential to preserve the community's core values for education," end quote. My question is, how will we know our embrace and our community's core values if our community is not an actively gauged part of the conversation? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to make a public comment? No? Okay, we will close that section of our agenda and we will, we are going to move up the Budget and Property Committee report due to unavailability of Member Foster Cannon to present it later on in our agenda. So we would like to invite Member Foster Cannon to present the Budget and Property Committee report. Is she still with us? I know that she had a difficult time staying for much more of the meeting, so perhaps she is not able to be with us. We'll try again, see if she returns. So at this time, it's, we have our announcements, our school committee announcements. If anyone has an announcement, please raise your hand. Any announcements? I don't see any on Zoom or...
I don't have one, but was, are you going to make an announcement about NEF? Something for Margaret?
I think it's in the agenda. So thank you for reminding me. Or is it not in the agenda? It's not? Thank you. Yes, why have that? Yes, thank you. So I will make the announcement for Member Miller, who cannot be here. She is the NEF liaison. And NEF has announced that their Small Grants to Educators program is accepting applications for their spring cycle. Small grants fund the development of new programs and approaches that strengthen the student learning both in the classroom, during the school day, as well as extracurricular initiatives. NEF invites grant applications from teachers and administrators in Northampton's seven public schools, all NPS and Smith Oak. They also welcome applications for projects initiated by caregivers, community members, students, and local organizations as long as they are done in collaboration with an educator. Small grants are available in amounts up to $3,000 per year and grants submitted jointly and involving a collaboration across two or more public schools are eligible for up to $5,000 per year. Awarded grants may reapply for subsequent grants in the following years for up to three years total. Grant funding may be used to pay costs such as stipends for teachers, grant administration time, substitute teachers, consultants, travel and transportation materials, subscriptions, and supplies directly related to the proposals. Applications to be considered for the spring application cycle may be received, must be received by 11:59 PM on Monday, April 15, 2024. Spring cycle applications are for projects that will begin no sooner than July 1, 2024 and must be completed by June 30, 2025. Those interested in applying should visit northhamtoneducation.org to thoroughly review the Small Grants to Educators Program guidelines before applying online. Thank you, Member Miller, for submitting that to me to read during announcements. Any other announcements? Nope, so we will, that unless Member Foster Cannon is back, I don't see her, so we will go forward with the recommended actions. This is a vote for consent agenda, meeting minutes for approval, January 11, 2024, November 9, 2025. Is this part of it, Member Seraphy Cox? Are you just anticipating? Yeah, okay. January 24, 2023, March 20, 2020. Is there a motion or a proposal to withdraw? Remember Seraphy Cox?
I would like to withdraw January 2023 for small changes and I would make a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda.
Thank you. Anyone else? Oh, we need a second for that.
A second.
Okay, we have a second. Member Seraphy Cox made the motion, Member Hennessy, or Member Labonte made the second. So we will vote a consent agenda for these minutes on January 11, November 9, and March 20, and withdraw the January 20, 24, 2023. Yes. One other.
On January 11, it's just a typo. Instead of anti-Semitic, this is anti-semitic. And I just, if you want to write more.
Can we just fix that and not withdraw it? Thank you. All right. Do we have a roll call, please?
Member Foster Cannon? Number Seraphy Cox?
Yes.
Member Stein?
Yes.
Member Hennessy?
Yes. Did you say yes?
Member Labonte?
Yes.
Member Egna?
Yes.
Member Davis?
Yes.
Member Gazy?
Yes.
Thank you. We're moving on to...
So I'll make a motion to approve the January 24, 2023 minutes with the following change, which is that there are principals who are referred to in the minutes and they are referred to as Member Worley, Member Harrison, that sort of thing, instead of their actual titles.
Okay, so we can correct that? Do we need to bring that to the next meeting to have a final approval?
No, I made a, I made a motion to approve it with that change.
Thank you. All right, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Great. Member Seraphy Cox moved to approve 24, January 24, 2023. Member Gazy seconded it. We have another roll call, please. You're catching up. Great, thank you. No, it's not a problem. Not at all.
Member Seraphy Cox?
I'm sorry, I have a, yes.
Member Stein?
No.
Member Hennessy?
Yes.
Member Labonte?
Yes.
Member Egna?
Yes.
Member Davis?
Yes.
Member Gazy?
Yes.
Member Foster Cannon, are you back?
Thank you. Now we move on to new business action items. And our first one is vote to approve NHS Programme Studies SY 2024 to 25. And we have Principal Wurley. Again.
And could Principal Worley, like, move the microphone even closer? It's still pretty hard to understand.
How's that? Hi. Hello again. So I want to make sure you have, we updated the copy of the Programme of Studies in your folder, I think, this morning, so you should have, no?
It wasn't there, because it was already posted.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Well, unfortunately, then you don't have the copy with the new cover on it. So it has a cover now, artwork by students, so we'll get you that copy tomorrow. And it'll, it's actually posted on our website as a draft, so you can find it there. The most, so the Programme of Studies here, there's fairly minimal changes, mostly language and clarification. For example, the, what was the, the department formerly known as Fine and Performing Arts is now Visual and Performing Arts. And that aligns better with how the rest of the world talks about art. There's one, there's one change on the list which we took off the list. The very first one, which is a graduation requirement, in conversation with the Curriculum Subcommittee, we, they determined that actually that's a policy change and that that language to go to the Policy Subcommittee, it's not an urgent change. And so we'll, we took that out of the Programme of Studies so that, even though you see it in the copy you're looking at, it's not what we're asking you to prove tonight because that will bring that back at a later date. So part of the logic of the limited changes was understanding that the fiscal situation was going to be very tight and we did not want to propose anything like a new course that might add additional cost and be difficult to support at this time. So we're, again, and we'll also come back with, I think, a timeline which, particularly for new courses and Programme of Studies changes that would have a budgetary impact and try and do those, start those actually in the spring so that by, before we get to budget planning in the fall, we have an idea of what we needed, what the impact on the budget would be. So there's really, there are no budgetary considerations or changes in terms of the proposed Programme of Studies. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, there are members who want to ask questions. I wonder if we should have a motion before so we could have discussion? I think that's the, so let's have a motion to vote on this for approval. Anyone make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Member Gazy makes a motion.
I'm a senior at Northampton High School.
And, and Lady, Member Davis seconds it. Now we can have a discussion. And Member Stein?
Thank you. I have three questions. The first two are more related to budget pieces. We've recently been talking about. So on, I don't even know when we met, Tuesday, whenever we had the Budget and Property Subcommittee meeting, we talked about the proposed current reductions at the high school. And what we were told that that meant was that there was going to be two reductions to specials. And I'm wondering, when I look at this Programme of Study, what courses and what units are considered... what units are considered specials? And should we assume that if the proposal goes through, that some of these will not take place?
So I can, almost here, I think the question is, what will the impact of the reduced positions be on course offerings?
Yes.
Summarize it, yeah. So what I would say is, we, we have, while the, the budget, the cost-centered budget that I, that I think you received shows specific positions that have been reduced, those, the way that the Budget Director has explained that to me is those are placeholders. We haven't actually made this, identified specific positions, and that's in part because we want to do it, we're, we're still in the process and still looking at how many positions. Currently, there's four positions that are reduced in the, in the budget from the current staffing, and one of the things we want to do is look at the data, and that's partly course requests, and then make decisions based on what we think we can responsibly do. And so that, there's, there's sort of, the way I think of it, there's three possible impacts. One is to increase class sizes, another is to reduce course offerings, and the third is to reduce services to students. So there'll be, and, and given the number of positions, I would anticipate that all three of those will be impacted.
Great. My second question is similar, it's along the lines of the Guidance Department. So what we were presented on the last meeting, the Budget and Property Subcommittee was losing one Guidance Counselor and one Adjustment Counselor, and given sort of what we've heard tonight, I'm wondering if you could talk about what the impact might be in terms of what the Plan of Study outlines is going to be delivered relative to that, that department if we make those cuts.
Again, as I, as I understand it, the, the, the cost-centered budget, those are placeholders, and we haven't made final decisions on which positions would be reduced. And if it's four positions, I, I would argue vociferously that we cannot reduce two counseling positions.
Okay, thank you, yeah. Last question has to do with a perennial, an annual issue here, which is the, the question of embedded honors in math. And I know you had just come on last year when we had this, I think you were maybe a month into the job, and there have been three previous years where sort of questions about this had gone unanswered. And last year, we voted to send this question to the Curriculum Subcommittee and for some data to be collected so that we can understand this change. And to my knowledge, we haven't gotten any of that information, and here we are again being asked to vote on the program. So I'm wondering where we've gotten to with evaluating that change in curriculum and what the updates are.
If I, if I may interrupt, because that's not really your really with Principal Wally, I want while, sorry, I'm a little tired. So, so apparently, the Subcommittee, Curriculum Subcommittee has not responded to that, so it's not up to the principal to take on what was assigned to that Subcommittee to respond. So I think that that's, that's all I have to say.
I, I'm not sure that's accurate if there are members of that Subcommittee. I know there was meetings held regarding this, and so that it had been taken up, and that we were, they were waiting for information to come back. So I, I don't think it's the case, especially if we look at the record, that that's accurate. I mean, other members could correct me if I'm wrong.
Then you just asked. I mean, I don't, I don't understand. You just asked a question, and then you're saying it's not accurate. So you must know something that we don't know already, but it is in the review of the Subcommittee that should really be responding to this work. And so.
What I'm saying is that.
They may think I didn't finish.
I have the floor. I have the floor. It is my, I have the floor.
Okay.
Thank you. What I'm saying is.
I was in the middle of the statement.
There were meetings of that Subcommittee on this issue, and what you suggested was that it was referred there, and the Subcommittee did nothing. So the truth is somewhere in there.
It's the words in my mouth.
Okay. So Member Stein, let's let the superintendent answer now.
No, I, I don't have to answer. He's already put words in my mouth, and he's made the statement. And so it is the responsibility of that Subcommittee to answer to the School Committee, because that was the charge that was given. And I think I was, I was taught early this week that the, the, the role of the School Committee is to then refer things to Subcommittee, and the Subcommittee is then charged to respond in that manner. So the Subcommittee that is, is, is active should then respond to your question.
But we don't have an answer to that. It wasn't on our agenda, and we can put it on our agenda for our next meeting, which will be in March.
Can you be specific? Who's agenda? The School Committee's agenda or the Curriculum?
Curriculum Subcommittee.
Thank you, because I, I think that needs to be clarified.
Okay, so the Curriculum Subcommittee will take up that agenda item in the next meeting.
I, I mean, just, I, I appreciate that. I appreciate you pointing out that my colleagues may have fallen down on this and not brought it back, but we can't keep having these meetings where things we vote on as a body don't happen. And the only time a member can ask about this is when something like this is being presented, because I'm being asked to vote on it again. This will be the fourth time that a committee has voted on this same issue, and the same questions come up and haven't been answered. So I'm really hoping maybe fifth times the charm, and next year, the Curriculum Committee will bring us what's been asked for, for, for three iterations of this committee now. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Seraphie Cox?
Yes, and apologies, I missed what Principal Worley said was the, was the graduation requirement that is on the version we have that should be taken off of what we're voting on. I just wanted to be clear about that.
Yes, that's correct. So the, the very first item on the list of changes that we want to do, have enrollment be a part of a graduation requirement, is not in the document that you'll be approving tonight. We've, we scratched that from the document.
Okay, so the one that says a student must be enrolled at Northampton High School for their last two semesters prior to graduating.
Yes, exactly.
And that's going to.
I, I, I had a lot of questions about that one, so I'm glad that that's the one that is being removed. And you said that it'll be the Curriculum Subcommittee that takes that up?
No, that will be referred to the policy rules.
Policy, yes, thank you.
Yes, it will take up that one. Are there any more comments before we move to the vote?
Yes.
Yes.
I love this, very clear, very organized, and I think, and I love the artwork. You did a great job, all of you.
In case somebody didn't see all of them.
Thanks. Good luck.
Any others?
I actually, I don't know if this is related, but I feel like it's incumbent upon one of us to say this, and it's just to remind the public that School Committee is charged with three things, and one is the evaluation of the superintendent, the second is rules and policy, and the third is budget. And so sometimes it gets, it's difficult, and we are discussing different issues, one of them being the Program of Studies, where it came to the Curriculum Committee, but that's, it's a, it's a tricky committee, because we really don't approve curriculum. We approve budget and policy. And so through no fault of anyone, we realize this was a, a rule and policy, and that goes to a different Subcommittee. So I just think sometimes the public, including me, when I wasn't on the School Committee, I thought the role of the School Committee was much larger than it actually is, but just to remind the, the public of that, and that's why this happened.
Thank you. Member Stein?
Yeah, I, I mean, I just want to say that I think there's a disagreement about whether or not curriculum's in the purview of School Committees, and that it, it clearly is, and that's why we voted to reestablish the Curriculum Committee during the last session. It's why the majority of other districts have them, and we do have to approve changes to the curriculum. That's one of our responsibilities. And I think this idea that we don't, I, I want to see where, where it says in the law we don't do this, if this is going to be the new vision of what our purview is. But the mission that we approved as a committee for curriculum is very specific, and if we're going to walk away from that, we got to have a bigger discussion about it. But I don't want the community to think that it's the case that we were just mistaken, and the curriculum's not in School Committee purviews. It, it most certainly is, and there's a disagreement about that, and we can debate the relative facts and statutes and make a determination. And over the past couple of committees, it's swung in different directions, one to eliminate the Curriculum Committee that existed, and one to restore it, and I'm not sure where we are, but it's a conversation that we, we should have as a body. Thanks.
Thank you.
Can I say one?
Yes, Member Davis.
Um, this very well might not be the moment to say this, but I just want to reiterate our communication agreement, that we agreed that we were going to actively and respectfully listen. So that means take turns, like I teach in my classroom, we need to take turns so we can really listen, and when we don't, we can't always hear what each other is saying anyway. So I just wanted to put that out there. We all need to keep trying.
Thank you. Okay, I think it's time for us to move to a vote on the N H S Program of Studies, S Y twenty twenty-four to twenty-five. Roll call, please.
Member Stein?
No.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Uh, no.
Member Hennessy.
Yes.
Member Labonte.
Yes.
Member Agno.
Yes.
Member Davis.
Yes.
Member Gazy.
Yes.
Member Seraphie Cox?
Checking this.
Thank you. Okay, moving to, I did get everyone. Vote to approve out-of-state field trip for Leeds Third Grade. We have that in our package. Anybody wants, is going to speak to it? Okay, thank you, Dr. Bonner.
Okay, so Leeds Elementary School's third grade classes, classes are traveling out of state to the Pinkpot Museum in Ashutucket, Connecticut on Friday, March twenty-ninth, and the teachers who are running this particular field trip are Megan Peles and Alyssa Messel. And so I'm hoping that tonight, the School Committee will approve this field.
Thank you. And we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the Leeds field trip. Good very good.
Member Gazy makes the motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
And this Member Labonte seconds it. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Member Hennessy.
Yes.
Member Labonte.
Yes.
Member Agno.
Yes.
Member Davis.
Yes.
Member Gazy.
Yes.
Member Seraphie Cox?
Yes, and it's a great museum.
Member Stein?
Yes. All right, thank you. Next is vote to approve out-of-state field trip for eighth grade, and Dr. Bonner will speak to it.
Okay, so the J F K eighth grade Right Flight Club would like to travel to the New England Air Museum in Windsor Locks, Connecticut. The advisor of that club is Jessica Thierry, and the trip will take place on April nineteenth.
Do we have any questions? We have a motion?
A motion.
Members, Labonte makes the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Member Gazy makes the second. Should have said then if there are any discussion, but at this point, we have a roll call.
Member Hennessy.
Yes.
Member Labonte.
Yes.
Member Agno.
Yes.
Member Davis.
Yes.
Member Gazy.
Yes.
Member Seraphie Cox.
Yes.
Member Stein?
Yes. Thank you. Next, to vote on the district calendar for school year twenty twenty-four to twenty-five, and lots of people are waiting for the answer on this.
Yeah, yes, starting to make plans for this year. So do you want to do the motion and I?
Yes, let's make, we make a motion to vote to approve the district calendar. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to vote to approve the district calendar.
Member Gazy, and Member Hennessy makes the second, and let's have any discussion about it.
Okay, so you will, will notice that the calendar has a new look this year, and I want to thank Michelle Jarvis for the design. It definitely helps those who, of us who are a little bit visually impaired. You will see that it has all of the data or the information that we normally have in our little boxes and so on, and they're categorized on the calendar. And it has been reviewed by both principals and states.
Great. I'd just like to comment that this is a welcome change to the calendar as far as being able to read it. Thank you, Michelle Jarvis.
I love college professors.
All right, we had a motion, and we, so we have any discussion more than what Dr. Bonner shared with us?
I have a question.
Member Davis.
I'm not suggesting that they should be included in the holidays, because there are many, many, but over years, years, you know, for school committee, just as parents of, of students, religious holidays could be, that, that teachers are not aware of, and they mistakenly, innocently, mistakenly say on exam or something, or field trip that day, and I'm wondering, again, I'm not suggesting that they should be on here since they're now days off per se, but would it be hopeful in some way? Or, or what? Would there be a system for that, through them to be updated, instead of a student having to go back saying, I can't be there, it's worship, it's something else?
So, Member Davis, what we can do is that, this is more so for the staff.
Yeah.
Is to just kind of put out at the beginning of the school year, a reminder of those special holidays, to be cognizant of how you plan accordingly, and then also even to remind us how we plan our administrative meeting, in terms of faculty meetings and so on, so that we can put that in the minutes to remind me to do that at the beginning of the school year. We definitely do that.
Okay, it did come up, I'll just make a comment, then, when we were taking different religious holidays off one year.
Right.
And it became very difficult, and we decided as School Committee to just go to federal holidays. But at the time, interim, Pearson Campbell did say that she would definitely do reminders to the staff of the religious holidays that some of their students might be celebrating. Member Seraphie Cox?
Yes, thank you. Um, I love the new look, like, amazing. I, I opened it, and I just, yeah, immediately was like, oh, I can read this. Yes, I made a note to, just a reminder about the holiday challenges, so thank you for, for bringing that up. Also, you know, we've been hearing from a lot of caregivers about challenges in terms of childcare crunches and so forth that happen on half-days and teacher workdays, and the week-long of, of half-days for the elementary caregiver-teacher conferences. So just kind of lifting that up again here, I'm not suggesting any changes with the calendar at this time, but wanting to highlight that those challenges continue, and, and highlight that at least the conferences are something that would need to, you know, be a, a mutual agreement with, with our, with our school employee association. So just highlighting that here. And then the one change that I would suggest is that. Just highlighting that here. And then the one change that I would suggest is that, um. You have a note that just says. Snow days will be added accordingly, but there is a, um. Uh, a maximum number of snow days that we can have. So there is a guaranteed. The the school year will not extend beyond this date, and so if that can somehow be indicated on. The calendar, that would be helpful.
I don't know if that would be confusing, but we could make that statement because they should know, uh, the law, 180 days. Uh, can make up time until June 30th of official cutoff.
Mm hmm. So I. Uh, well, uh, there is that, but I, it was my understanding that, like, you know, there's. A maximum number of snow days, like that you can't have more than five snow days or whatever. I forget how many it is.
Now, the maximum, you you can't go beyond June 30th, and so there's a couple of timeframes that you have to consider. You have to consider. At minimum, 180 days. And then, uh, if there are, um, days off due to inclement weather, because it's not just snow days.
And. Yeah, of course.
You have until June 30th to make up those days. And you somehow have to make sure that it equals the 180. So that's pretty much the regulation.
Of the law.
Okay, I think that maybe I misunderstood because past. Calendars had the like. The snow days and would say like last possible. End of school. Um, I'll I'll pull up one of the old calendars, but if that is not actually a thing, then no, you shouldn't put it on the calendar.
Yeah.
Okay, very good.
Thanks.
We'll look into it, just to make sure, but that's usually how it.
Yep, we need the 180 days, and I know there's been discussion about. When we had a lot of snow days that we were going to have to go to into April or February vacation in order to do that. So anyway, we'll check it out. Thank you. Uh, members Stein. I just wanted to confirm that any of the. Open houses or other, I think it's just the open houses there, don't conflict with school committee meetings.
Want to know if, uh.
Open houses conflict with any holidays. No, no, uh, with school committee meetings.
Oh, no, we made sure we checked that this year. So that was crazy.
Yeah, we had a problem this year. So thank you for that question, but I'm glad that we get checked on it for this calendar. Any other questions before we vote? Thank you again. Member Jar, I mean. Clerk Jarvis for the new design.
Member Agno.
Member, okay, maybe we have a roll call, please.
Member Labonte.
Yes.
Member Agno.
Yes.
Member Davis.
Yeah.
Member Gazy.
Yes. With the full mouth, sorry.
Member Seraphie Cox.
Yes.
Member Stein.
Yes.
Member Hennessy.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, now we have vote to approve special education budget transfers, and we have. Bobby Jones stepping up to the plate on this one. Welcome, Bobby.
They call together.
Oh, we're gonna take all of them together. Okay, so one is legal services for $20,000. Second is therapy services, $20,000. Collaborative tuition, 46, 650. Public in-state tuition at 58,527 and tutoring services at $65,000. Bobby Jones, please.
Okay, so these transfers are basically just within, um, the department. Um, for instance, the collaborative tuition is just moving from, um. Non-public tuition, so it was just where we placed students at the time. Um, when we were budgeting last year, but they actually went to a different. School, so that's just a matter of moving within, um, the same section, just different. The way I reported at the end of the year report. Um, same for the non-public tuition and the public in-state, that's just moving to the correct lines. Um, and tutors, the same, is just kind of moving them around. The one thing that we are really reducing is the translation services. Um, you'll see that on the, um. Fed legal service transfer and then also on the tutoring service. Uh, have a reduction in the translation services. And that is an area we will be reducing in the second round on the budget. Uh, because we've had some real good, um. Results with Parent Square and then Michelle has our superstar tonight has, um. Come up with some other ways in which we can do it, and then Lauren Berry, our EL person, um, is working with a company. Um, that could provide the service to us for a much lesser price while meeting all our, um, legal requirements.
Thank you, Bobby. Um, first to have a discussion, let's have a motion to approve this budget, budget transfers. Do you have a? Motion?
I moved to the budget transfers.
Do we have a second on that?
A second.
Okay, member Hennessy made the motion, member Gazy seconded it. Um, do we have any discussion about this? Member Stein. Um, hi Bobby, I I saw this on air and I kind of wish we had been able to talk about it at budget and property the other day. Um, but I'm curious if. The transfers are the amount we budgeted, but as all attributed, like I understand you're saying the. The tuition seems to be that, but is there an increase overall in the amount of money we're talking about for these expenditures based on what we budgeted?
Yeah, so the lines that we're transferring into, if you look at your, um, the sheets we're taking from. And the lines that we're putting to are actually increasing that line from what we had originally budgeted.
Right, I guess I'm wondering because we're moving between accounts, if the net is more.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. All right, that that's what I couldn't, uh, figure out. It seemed like it was. The same, but, um. Great, and, um, on the tutoring services, was that move just because we use a different provider?
Basically, yes. Whether we used an in-house or contracted versus, um. You know. Regular ed versus special ed, that sort of thing. So, yeah, it's just a change in. In the department.
And on the legal services one. It, do we have multiple legal services for special education accounts that we move them between or?
Just one. We have one, um, we have two legal lines in our budget. One is for regular ed and one is for special ed. So we just.
Are we, are we moving one, are we moving the 20 from the regular ed to the special ed?
No, we're removing the 20. We're using the translation service line and moving it into the sped legal service line. So we're increasing the sped legal service line, and I see that, um, Josh has his hand up.
Director Dixon, do you want to jump in here, Director Dixon?
Um, I just wanted to clarify, uh, to answer member Stein's question regarding, uh, the tutoring. Services, we've seen an increased number of students who have been hospitalized over the course of this year. Uh, which has required us to increase our contracted tutoring services line because we're required to provide tutoring services to students. Um, when they are either homebound on a home hospital form. Uh, or if they are actually hospitalized inpatient, and so we've seen a drastic. Uh, increase in the amount of students who have required that level of service over the course of this year.
Thank you, Director Dixon. And so Bobby, is it right to say that the offset of what you're able to save in translation paid for the additional amount of legal? So it balanced out?
It does.
Okay, okay, gotcha. Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Member Seraphie Cox.
Oh, yes, uh, I had raised my hand to ask a question about the, um. The translation. I wanted to make sure that it wasn't like. People aren't requesting it, but, uh, you answered, uh, the question and it sounds like great news, Bobby. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments before we vote? All right, maybe we have a roll call, please.
Member Agno.
Yes.
Member Davis.
Yes.
Member Gazy.
Yes.
Member Seraphie Cox.
Yes.
Member Stein.
Yes.
Member Hennessy.
Yes.
Member Labonte.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, now we're going to reports and recommendations, and we begin with our superintendent's report and Dr. Bonner.
See if I can share. See if it works for you. Now, Mason's not working.
So, there we go. This. Days, it works. Some days it doesn't, so it's work, yeah. So, um. I will try to keep this relatively brief because there's quite a few points that I need to make. So first off, this evening, each February, National Black History Month serves as a, as both celebration and a powerful reminder of the immeasurable contribution to Black Americans to the fabric of this nation. Recognizing the legacies and achievements of generations past reckon with centuries of injustice and addressing those injustices that still linger. We recognize our staff, students and families that identify themselves as Black, African-American, Brown, BIPOC and people of color. So currently in our district, we have 15 staff members across all units and non-union members that make up the diversity of our staff. 3.2% of our students identify as African-American and 7.4% are multiracial. So I wanted to share that this evening in celebration of Black History Month. And so now tonight, the the main point of my, um, report is to talk a little bit about where I am with the three goals that we set at the beginning of the school year. As well as to give you some highlights of where I am in terms of my entry plans. They're they're intertwined. And so Michelle will be sending you. The actual Google, uh. Uh, well, it's not really a presentation, it's really just a document, and so you will see in the document that there are, um. Sources of evidence that, um. Will show you that I'm making progress towards goals. So the first goal is effective entry and direction setting, and so if you remember back in September or so, I did a. Presentation in terms of the entry plan, and so I have actually been implementing that entry plan in such a manner as fact gathering from key stakeholders. And reviewing documents that provide insight into the operational structure of the system. The final expected outcome of this plan will contribute to the development of a new multi-year strategic plan. And so there were several benchmarks for. Assessing this goal, and so for one, I've already completed the presentation. Secondly, is the implementation of the plan itself. We are actually in the third quarter, can't believe that. And so if you, uh, hit the link, you can actually, uh, see the entry plan. And then update in terms of the entry plan itself. So very quickly.
Oh. See if I can do this.
Nope, very quickly. I got a lot going on here. Let me see if I can get back. It's again, if you, uh, tap on the updates. You will see that there is a chart that really kind of highlights in terms of some of the meetings that I have held, uh, sample agendas. Uh, you will see, uh. Some, uh, and when I say sample agendas, sample agendas for the alt meetings, you see sample agendas for the principal meetings, central office meetings, as well as the. My superintendent's cabinet meetings. Um, we will also see examples of the goal or the dates in which I met with each principal in terms of their setting up their goal for their evaluation. All right, so and then. Currently conducting a survey of stakeholders to assist with identifying goals and priorities of the school district. Results from this survey will contribute to the multi-year strategic planning process. Both leadership and planning teams have been initiated in the following, uh, in the following the Plan for Success. Protocol, which comes from besties. All right, administrators of professional learning around restorative practice and SEL. Currently, we are reading the little bit theories of restorative justice and education by Catherine Evans, Dorothy Vandering, as a professional learning community. This spring, the through the partnership with Soulful University, we will train 20 staff members. Excuse me, two or more. For building to then be trainers in their assigned buildings to bring a district-wide model to restorative practices. The past year and a half, principals have been discussing what restorative practice means to us in our respective schools. And clarifying our approach of implementation. It's important to have a common understanding of why restorative practices are being implemented. For the district, restorative practices means. Three things, creating just an equitable learning environment, nurturing healthy relationships. And repairing harm and transforming conflicts. This was lifted directly from our reading, so that's the reference in terms of page five. The sixth benchmark, we have, uh, several SEL programs, A through eight, that's different relationships between individuals as well as developed social connections between communities and schools. Restorative practices help to create a trusted environment by giving both students. Both students, um. And adults. An opportunity to make positive choices and interact, uh, respectfully in the classroom and through the school. Uh, next steps is to build foundational structures to support restorative practices. And, um, just to share with you, um. In the month of December, I believe it was, uh, and prior, the curriculum subcommittee actually had, um. Staff presentations, the principal as well as the staff members shared in terms of some of the SEL programs that are in, uh, our elementary schools. Okay, the seventh benchmark, updating select policies including conduct to include anti-bias and anti-race language and fact. The first half of the school year, working with the alt team, council and policy and rules subcommittee, we updated the implementation plan to prevent bullying and the policy that addresses bullying. Behavior. Administration continues to converse about our processes, protocols and procedures. I will, um, just kind of reference that this goal was probably the most unique of all of the goals, so the other ones are not as well.
So we're almost sure now for this.
So the other piece eight, equitable budget that addresses needs of learners that provides opportunities, accessibility and inclusion. The budget process in December, I presented the first view of the 2024, 2025 school budget. This budget was developed with the assistance of building principals and department heads, who each presented their needs to the district manager and the superintendent during the move in October. And there were four guiding principles to help our decision-making and still continues to be. I won't read those because those, again, are lift directly from the the latest newsletter that I would share in terms of the budget process, so that should be familiar to you. Okay, if we go to see. The last benchmark. Under this goal. Was to introduce smarty goals in terms of, uh. When we build our school improvement plan, so smarty goal is just a take on SMART goals, and it just includes. The, uh, component of inclusion and equity, and so you can see how we went about, and we're still working on this, um, so. The principals, you know, they took it to task, took it to their school council members and began to draft the wording appropriate. And so in the, I don't know why that keeps going. So in. So in the document, you can get a sample of the draft of school improvement plan using that process. Okay, goal two, new superintendent induction program. So again, you can see the benchmarks for this particular one, there were two. And so first of all, a calendar, documents, so, sorry. So some of the evidence that I would collect for this were the actual attendance to the sessions. And so this is a listing of the sessions that I have attended thus far. We have a full session in March, and then the other two will be half-day sessions until the end of June. And so that will be my first year of the NISA program. And then there is a year two, which is less intensive, but it has been, it's been interesting, it's been a good networking experience and connecting to other superintendents. So we have, we have discussed, we have discussed the wide range of leadership, topics on leadership. And just, again, navigating, and this, this program was really solely for new superintendents, but it's, it's for me, it's nice to be a part of conversations because I haven't been in Massachusetts in a while. And it's also just an opportunity for me to network with other school superintendents. So part of the process of the NISA program is that we look at our leadership style. And so one of the tools that they use for, for the participants to examine their leadership style is the Bowman and Deal Four-Freight Model. And so this was a conversation in the Evaluation Subcommittee Group two meetings prior, in, in terms of what this was all about. And I said, well, you know, I, I would love to share this with you, and then I would love to redo the, the scoring and see if it changes after I have been in with you all for a year. It's truly experiences begin to shape your leadership style. And so, but currently, right now, my, my, my preference is the human resource approach emphasizing the importance to people. And then the second and third, the second being an emphasis on the rationality and analysis, logic, facts, and data, which really goes with my science background. And then the third score, I had a tie between the political acumen and the symbolic approach. You can see what those, those, and how I keep identifying with those. The last goal, and then we just kind of briefly go through those indicators, is to maintain momentum during the transition. And so keep moving forward during this year's transition to leadership by working with principals and other district leaders to ensure that meaningful progress is made on critical district and school goals. So as you all know, that not only me being new to the district, we had many new principals. And so, you know, working with them, setting their evaluation goals, and then also assigning them coaches to help them. And to really talk about some of the things that they have been dealing with throughout the school year, and so, as you say, are hot topics that we have conversations about. And then really kind of building a connection. You know, the elementary principals were pretty much isolated, so now you're starting to see more conversation amongst the four of them. And I have nicknamed them the, the elementary powerhouse. And I know I say that often. So I have also, as you all know, that I do, I do school visits. And I've now been doing some formal walkthroughs, going into classrooms. I've been focusing on the math, particularly the math program, because that is in its, I would say it's second year full piloting, because there was a year where people had a decision whether they were to take it, but this is our official year, that everyone should be really implementing that particular curriculum. And then also the conversations that ensue after, in terms of what the principals, what we saw, having conversations, and how can we work to support that staff. And then and so you can, again, there's a link where you can go in and see the school visits that I've done and those that are upcoming. And some of the other things that you will see during the final, my final evaluation. So the goal is that I will update this and put links in, and so there will be, the links will be the evidence that supports that evaluation. So when you all are doing the scoring, you'll have that evidence right in front of you. And so lastly, very quickly, in terms of the indicator, so there are four indicators that I chose, the first being standard of instructor leadership. And so again, you'll see some links that'll show you some examples of some of our, our agendas and some of the goals that we have set. And then, oh, I wanted to see if I could do this. There's also in terms of this new platform that we're using, Open Architect Account, it is our depository for data. So you can actually get us, if you touch or go into the sample, you can get a screenshot of our data and our profile. So I won't do that tonight, you all can do that as well. Analysis of school classroom observations, so again, we had convers, we being the principals had conversations, and our director of curriculum instruction led those conversations in terms of our forecast data. Let's see. Let's see. And then very quickly, okay, again, budgets, so I inserted the, the actual budget presentation and timeline. And then okay, so that got a little crazy here. So outreach to stakeholders and organizations, so here's some of the samples of some of the organizations and groups that I have met with that are with community stakeholders, and so, and partnering. It's just been a pleasure working with many, many of these people. Okay, and then indication indicator, so you will see that I have inserted samples of the newsletter, some of the weekly updates that not only do you all get weekly, and they're not necessarily serially weekly, but you get, so you won't get one tomorrow. So there are updates that you receive, so so do the alt team and principals. And in, in our meetings, we actually have a running minutes. So we're just all sharing different things and, and comments and data pieces and so on. And that is for our purviews to, to be able to do what we need to do as, as a team. And then also, there are some samples of some of the different postings in Parents Square. There is a sample of teacher postings, there's a sample of a principal's posting, the district-wide posting. So that is all for you all to at your own leisure, take a look at. And then the bullying prevention plans, this goes into our professional culture, cultural, the indicators, so a little bit about the relevant policies and so on. So we know bullying prevention plan was a big thing at the very beginning of the school year, and that's attached there. And then under the professional, the continuous learning indicator, I've shared about our PLC group where we are focused on restorative practices. So there are some sample questions of what we've been focusing on in our book discussion and principal group. Okay, so that's a little bit about the, where I am in terms of my evaluation roles and entry plan. And then the last piece of my report was student attendance data that I wanted to put this year with you all. We talked about, when we did the we talked a little bit about student attendance and tried to capture if we saw any changes in the students' attendance due to the start time. And so I think I've captured the years, I tried to get a couple of years before the pandemic. Because we've got that in the interplay as well with the changes. So you can kind of get a look at where we are, so this is elementary. And you can see the spike, so we know where COVID would have been, it's really twenty twenty was COVID. And so you would see that in this year, you could see the absence. But then twenty-one, twenty-two, you know, there was a return, but you see the spikes, and then twenty-two, twenty-three was, was just, you know, last year, you see that spike, and then this is just from August until December. So and you can see some of the concerns in terms of the tardiness that's occurring. This is the elementary schools, so now they're starting a little early, so you want to watch that. And what dismissals are, you know, they're kind of up and down. But I want to show you the middle of my school very quickly. And there's actually you can see twenty-two, twenty-three and the twenty-one, twenty-two year, again, you know, these were the years when we were just returning from COVID, twenty-one, twenty-two. And then you still see that spike, and you see where we are now for the first four months from school. But take a look at the dismissals, the early dismissals, and then take a look at the tardy. So Jeff Kay, or so this is Okay. Oh, I sit down. And then lastly, the high So again, you, you you kind of wondered about the, the early dismissals, but they seem, you know, you can take a look at the numbers, so the tardies are interesting, especially if they're starting late, so I don't know quite what that is. That's a concern. So I wanted to this is beginning of the day tardy, it's not tardy to each class. Ha ha, so that is a good question, I would have to ask our data specialist to put this together. And because that, that high school is so unique, and it's also, so you have to ask the same thing about the absence too, how this is reported. So I will research that, and maybe you might Okay, for next, awesome, for next. Okay, so I will definitely ask our, our coordinator, our data analyst, Rebecca Casey, so I'll ask her how that's reported. And so I
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yes, please. Member Davis?
All right. You mentioned, Dr. Bonner, something about the elementary school teachers were or feeling, I can't remember what your words were, isolated.
And The principals.
The principals.
Oh, the principals.
Yes, yes. And I was wondering what you meant by that.
Yeah.
Not having a lot of time to work together, basically.
The collaboration tonight, that time to work together, that time to really talk to each other. And they are actually sharing a coach right now, and Roxandore, she meets with them once a month as a team. So it, it really has, I, I think it has enhanced their relationship. And then knowing about each other's sport, I mean, they are all very unique. And so, but they all have strengths that they need to share.
Yeah.
So I'm seeing that.
That's a great idea, to have them, give them time to work together. It's like, must be like a luxury, I'd say, so, thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Dr. Bonner? Thank you, Dr. Bonner.
Thank you.
Okay, we're moving on to the business administrator financial report, and Bobby Jones, you're up, Bobby.
Okay, so all my documents are in your packet. The warrants that have been pre-signed and the monthly report, as well as the expenditure report. I will give a detail in April on the expenditure report, that'll be for your third quarter of fiscal twenty-four. Other than that, we have the board docs update, which I will say Michelle has been working really hard on, and I will let her do her piece to update you.
Do you want to share them? So Michelle is going to be sharing with you, we actually did this agenda in board docs as a test run, but there is, there are some things that we're going to have to train the committee on, and we're trying to figure out when we'll do that. I know that we might have to have, well, we will have to have an emergency meeting to approve the final minutes to meet that deadline. So that might be a good time where we can also do the training in terms of how to access first, and then how to navigate the board docs. So, so she's going to show you a sample. So this is what you look at when you log in, you get to this welcome screen. And so here are the agendas that I created for today's meeting, which appear there when you tell them to. You have to find that spotlight, why aren't they there? So I found it. So if you click on the, the date of the meeting from that main screen, you can then view the agenda or print the agenda. I'm going to show you the print version rather than viewing it. When I view it, I see all the spots that I filled things in, so you have three different types of agendas, you can see. You have the simple agenda, which tells you just the topics and probably the subtopics under each one. Then you can go into the detailed agenda, and that's where it then shows you what type of category it is, so this one's just the roll call, this one's just discussing the norms. You get down to a vote one, it gives you a recommended vote, and then the attachments are there for those votes. So I'm just going to keep scrolling down, because there's a lot of votes there. That's what it would look like. I am not sure what it looks like on your end. But from my understanding through the training, is you're allowed, you can vote from the screen if you're logged in, and that's one thing that I think that's what we need to figure out, because I see something different than what you can see. But it was something I played with and figured it out, and then I thought I lost everything, I almost had a heart attack. I found it, it's just where is it, so. But it's interesting, it just takes time and to figure out how to put this up then.
Do you have any questions? Thank you for taking the initiative, even unless you're in interim or not a permanent. Member Seraphie Cox?
Just to say that I'm super excited about this and a thousand kudos for so swiftly implementing something that was not swiftly implemented before.
Great. Anyone else have any comments or questions? Okay, thank you. So the Budget and Properties Subcommittee had a budget update that member Foster Cannon was going to present, and she is just asked if there's anything that she can extend us, but I don't think I've got anything. And I'm sorry that we can't have that report at this point, given that she's not here. Member Stein?
Yeah, you know, Carrie, Member Labonte and I are here, and we can offer Yeah, um, you know, Carrie, uh, member LaBonte and I are here and we can offer a minority report. Um, as well. Um, so. I'd be happy to convey, given the the timelines we're on, what we discussed and what our next steps are. So that the committee can understand what we're doing.
That alright with you, member LaBonte? Yeah, okay.
So um, in this this past meeting, we um, got a presentation overview of. The enrollment numbers for the district. Um, looking at the February enrollment numbers as well as um. The sort of the historical shifts over time. How many, how many have we lost over a certain number of years? And um, there's like a slight discrepancy in the figure that we saw on the original first look budget. Um, so on that budget, we saw a decline of, I think, two point nine percent over like six fiscal years. We're just going to confirm if it's like a keyed in error or something else, but that could, that could grow or not. Um. But we we've lost some students. Um, and the conversation we really had was about um. What some of the the first look budget um, decisions would do related to those enrollments? So where would class size is increased? Where do we see other stresses um, on services? Based on where reductions in staff are being recommended as part of that process. So we walked through that. And those were the positions I was referring to earlier when I asked um. Principal Worley about the uh, the counselor positions and the specialist teachers. Um, so the conversation was centered around the enrollments um, and the fact that we do have declining enrollments. Um, we did discuss also school choice uh, and. Saw a distribution of where our school choice incoming students are across the district. And um, in that conversation, it was clear that. If we had, if we made the decision as a district to no longer participate, we really would not save any money. So we'd probably be out, we would lose money. Um, because it's not a cluster of students that are school choice. In any area where if they weren't here, you would be able to reduce a service that would actually save you any money. So financially, um, it's not a a win-win to 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 eliminate. As you know, for us to opt out of that as a school committee. And we would still have all the students that we currently have enrolled throughout the duration anyway. So um, those are the big things. Next meeting, we're going to talk about uh, special education. Um. I believe uh, Director Dixon is going to join us and and review that. And at some point, I don't know if that meeting or a future meeting. Um. Uh, member uh, Cannon Foster mentioned that Director Nardi was going to join us. Um, so there are some plans for the next couple, couple meetings that she she mentioned. Um, and I'm hoping member LaBonte can add any context or things I forgot to mention.
Anything, member LaBonte, that you'd like to add?
Uh, no, uh, just that we understand we're under a tight timeline. And that we want to make sure that these topics all get addressed before we have to make a recommendation.
Thank you. Thank you, member Stein. Um, and appreciate that we had that update. Curriculum subcommittee. Um, the chair is myself. I've been elected chair at our meeting this past week. And um, we had an organizational meeting. Uh, which was in attendance and member MC and superintendent Bonner. Um, and. We heard after we did our organization, we heard from Principal Worley. And Assistant Principal Megan Harrison about their work on the. Um, program of studies and which they've reported on again today. And it was very similar to that. And it was exactly what um, Principal Worley did present to us. Tonight. And that was the. That was our curriculum subcommittee. That's my report for it. And now we go to the LPAC liaison who is member Seraphie Cox. Can you have a report?
Yes, thank you. Uh, let me pull out my notes so that I don't forget things. Um, so I attended um, my first um, full um. Uh, EL PAC uh, meeting. EL PAC um. Uh, stands for English Learner Parent Advisory Committee. Um, they have about three to four meetings per year. They provide resources for parents. They also um, bring in feedback from parents. Um, some of the uh, challenges that uh, that. Have been like the feedback that then I received. Um. As you know, as the liaison there, um, was about uh, lack of after-school program support. Um, um, a bit about uh, lack of communication in Spanish. Um, uh, and that uh, at times folks don't know what resources are available. Um, with the uh, with the after-school programs, a concern about both the costs. And that uh, at least uh, the after-school program that they were talking about with um. Uh, which are, is not the why um, uh, ends at four P M. Um. There were concerns about start time, um, concerns about start time in terms of um, of childcare issues. And so really that was um, uh, very tied to the after-school concerns. Um. And um, and uh, folks also um, uh, looking for more information and support. Um, about how to apply for college and especially how to apply for financial aid. Um. They. Let's see. Yes. So the the um, I was presented to a roomful of. Of folks um, who were so gracious. Um, and um, and. Um, there was uh, simultaneous uh, English, Spanish translation and vice versa. Um, the vast majority of the uh, caregivers who were in attendance um, are Spanish speaking. Um, mostly monolingual, but not entirely. Um, there. Uh, so the vast majority, but not all of the of the caregivers in attendance were Spanish speaking. And um. Um, and it it really just felt like the community building place. And that um, was really meaningful for me personally. Um, as many of you know, my my personal stake in all of this. But also in terms of um, us as a district, that this is a new thing. We did not have an English learner parent uh, advisory committee. Um, you know, when I started on uh, on school committee. So um. Or it was like just just starting up. So this is, it it's been an incredible development uh, from the. Uh, from the beginnings to where it is now. And uh, I'm, I'm really excited for what this group. Uh, is going to be bringing to the uh, to the school committee. And um. Uh, and that there were significant um, concerns voiced about uh, about. The the budget as well. So um, folks were were pretty. Folks had a lot of um, a lot of questions about how um, I E Ps. Um, would be affected as well as um. Uh, let's see, uh, and class sizes, which is related to this uh, for special education students that. Uh, folks were really um, emphasizing uh, that. That class size, small class sizes are especially important for special education students. Um. And uh, and worried about the um, both Spanish and English learner uh, community. Resources that are available. Um, and then um, the last thing that I'll say is that uh. Folks uh, were were also interested in what sort of instruction uh, can be expanded. For uh, students in uh, in Spanish language itself. So not just English learner, but learning their, for most of these students, their native language, Spanish. Um, I shared my personal experience of my own daughter's uh, experience uh, in a dual immersion program. Um, that uh, was her kindergarten. Uh, she had two years of kindergarten in San Diego, California. And so I talked about kind of what dual immersion was. Um, and that. That seemed to resonate with the with the group. Um, I don't, you know, um, that's. Their, what they do with that, I don't know. But uh, that was a really interesting discussion in terms of. Not just caregivers wanting obviously educational access for their students and. Wanting to make sure that they learn English, but also wanting to make sure that they can be not just bilingual, but bilingual. But bilingual, uh, and to be literate in their native language as well. So. Um, so a really rich conversation and a really, really amazing community that's being built. So um, I'm so grateful to be the liaison and uh, to be able to. Share with you my impressions of the amazing work that um, that the EL PAC um. I don't know what they're called, like parent ambassadors or I don't know exactly what their uh, what their title is. But them and Lauren Berry, our family engagement coordinator have been doing excellent, excellent work.
Thank you, member Seraphie Cox. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Really appreciate your, that was a really thorough report and it's great that you're there for them. Um, now we go to rules and policy subcommittee and member Casey.
Uh, office thing is the J H D, which is the exclusion. Um. We want to share. Sit down at the bottom.
Yeah, that's.
Okay, do you have a comment? Okay, so we looked at um. The top in the black is our original policy. This is for our first reading. We then got the um, M A S C version. Um, and. Did a few changes. Um, Dr. Bonner forwarded uh, that to um. That's not the attorney Taylor one. That's the one for Jennifer Towel.
Oh, um, our, our uh, registrar.
Register to see if she had anything to do. Um, it was interesting. She commented that uh. That instead of just. She suggested this section here, each child must attend school beginning of September, the calendar year. Um. Or until, or she had taken. Well. The mask laws, she suggested citing the mask law. First, which says you have to be six, but each school committee is um. Is able to set their own things and then follow that with a tag along that the minimum age being age five. Um, which is our kindergarten effect. And there are various other places in the policies. We're also looking at uh, about school attendance, where we will be putting that type of language. Um. Other than that, this one's sort of short. It's the first one of all of our sort of attendance policies. That we're looking at in a packet to bring and make sure that we have similar language throughout. So.
So that's a first reading.
That's the first reading.
Mm-hmm. Um, member Seraphie Cox.
Yeah, um, perhaps you all have already had a conversation about this, in which case you can just say, yeah, we're talking about that. Um, and that's enough for me. Um, but as I look at it, uh, it it says. That. Let's see, sorry, um. Failure. Okay, so that's the part that is the fifth. Okay, so. Our previous policy has like that uh, being expelled. And um, and also the um, fail failure to comply with. J E C B. And so. I'm just curious, are the like, is this change going to impact that? Or are those things somewhere else that I'm just not seeing?
J E C B is the um. All these.
The attendance of foreign exchange students in the North Hampton Public.
That one we are still working on. Um, it has changes that have. Been uh, worked on. We had to do J F A B B. We had to do uh, the kindergarten. There's just this raft of J policies that are. Interconnected and that we have to make sure that they're all synchronized.
Yeah, and and I guess what I'm saying is our old policy. Has reference to J E C B. So it is synchronized in that way.
And this one doesn't.
Did not, yeah.
And sometimes there are policies in the J that there is no M A S C. Uh, equivalent. And I believe that J E C B. Is one of those.
Okay.
Um. That we are looking at.
Hmm.
So that's attendance for students uh.
Foreign exchange students.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And and it's also actually the more meaningful one is the J F A B B, which is the. Uh, acceptance of international and foreign exchange students. So those. That's why, you know, we wanted to make sure that we have all our cross references in line. So that we can, and I will look at all those cross references before our next. Meeting and make sure that they have. Been for me.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Other conversation or discussion about the first one that's the first reading?
Just that I'm going to add more.
Now we move to the second one, policy A C A B and policy A C A B A.
Those were forwarded by the superintendent who just wanted to update them by putting in the current.
Right.
Title nine coordinator. So it's just a name change in that piece. So that's a quick.
Does that need to have any action on our part or is that just?
Well. Yeah, it does. So next time we'll bring it. But meanwhile, but meanwhile, it's on our website as a brand.
Okay.
Has to come.
So we'll bring it to the next meeting as a vote.
As a vote, yeah.
Okay.
Who has your hand up, Carrie?
Oh, sorry, Carrie. Sorry.
I'm short, you can't. One question. So that that writing uh, in the black is, is that the, is that like pulled out of state?
That was pulled out of a um, email that we got that. Showed. Um, suggested the suggestions where, for instance. She suggested instead of having this failure to meet the. she suggested instead of having this failure to meet the requirements of age.
Right.
Uh, we should cite the letter of the law so that each children must attend school beginning in September, the calendar year, which she attends the age of six. Each school committee may establish its own permissible age for school attendance, provided that such age is not older than the minimum, and then the next sentence, our minimum age is five.
My, my question is, I wondered if it isn't state law to be written on, if you could put issue day?
Yes, thank you. Or there. Thank you, reminder. Um, and um the other policies that will be affected are J E B A. Just notice, yeah, the um first grade entrance policy, the residency policy, school admissions, school choice, immunization, and then again, all those other ones for the high schools for foreign exchange students. That we will be looking at. We don't need a vote.
First meeting?
No. First reading, yeah.
Oh. Hey. Is that it, member Casey?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Great, moving on, superintendent evaluation subcommittee. It's member Hennessy and myself and member Miller, who's not here. Um, I think we had a very thorough report today, tonight, from superintendent about where and what we also received as part of our subcommittee, our meeting, and appreciate the detail that you've gone into about it. Is there anything you'd like to add, member Hennessy?
No, I think your report was thorough and.
Yes, it's great. Really appreciate the detail and keeping track as well. Thank you. Okay, we are on to school for the discussion topics, which at this point, we don't have any under listed at this point. Um, future business and meeting dates, the curriculum subcommittee will meet Wednesday, March sixth, twenty twenty four at five P M. The budget and property subcommittee will meet Monday, March eleventh, twenty twenty four at five P M. The school committee meeting next one will be Thursday, March fourteenth, twenty twenty four at six thirty P M. And the rules and policy subcommittee will be Wednesday, March twentieth, twenty twenty four at four thirty P M.
Share, uh, just a change order that clerk of the subcommittee, the time change is three thirty.
Oh, that's right. We really, we did that.
We made that change on last evening, but.
We didn't get it communicated to our clerk. So at three thirty, we are meeting. Thank you for reminding me on Wednesday, March sixth. And everyone should know that all these meetings are posted and people are welcome to attend. We're very happy to have audience members and we will have public comment at those meetings if anybody would like to join and share with us anything that you'd like, like to us to know in our subcommittee meetings also. All right, we're going into executive session. However, we will return to open session because we will be doing some business in executive session and will we return to vote on the MOAs that we're discussing. So I wonder if anyone could make the motion to request to enter executive session?
I have it ready. Yeah, uh, motion to enter executive session under Massachusetts General Law, Open Meeting Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty One A Two, to approve and release executive session minutes and to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Um.
Thank you.
Uh, no, no, it's no good. Um, this executive session motion does not have the required language about um bargaining with union, with, you know, collective bargaining, which is what is required for, I believe, both of the MOAs listed in the agenda.
With the collective bargaining.
More search and text, like a bargaining section.
Right, but it says non-union personnel.
If it's that collective bargaining.
Or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, but the, the one that is um the one, the one that we, at least that I am used to for when we have um MOAs reads differently than this. I, I'm we can go in, I, I'll still make this motion, we'll go into executive session, obviously, we can do the um the minutes and I'll, I'll look up uh one of the past motions to, to see how, how the language is different, because the other thing is if it, if it's calling the correct uh section of open meeting law.
Right, so while, while you're looking at that, I believe that it's the, it's the one word at the last sentence of the motion. When we say non-union, it should just read with union personnel. It's, it starts, the, the, he starts for to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations. It should say with
Union personnel.
But you can double check the language there on that.
Double checks the language with past motions, is that what you mean?
Actually, no, actually, we'll just go straight to the open meeting. That's where that's full.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, there was three different, there's three different laws that we used. I'm thinking that it's just a um
Typo.
The typo, or it should be union, not none.
It should read negotiations with union personnel. Can we go into it and having you check it again, member Sarah Cox?
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll check it while we're doing the minutes.
Okay, so we have a request and a motion. Is there a second?
I can do.
All right. Let's have a roll call, please.
Hi, Davis.
Yes.
Member Casey.
Yes.
Member Sarah Cox.
Yes.
Member Stein.
Yes.
Member Hennessy.
Yes.
Member Labonte.
Yes.
Member Agna.
Yes. Hmm, yes. Okay, so again, a reminder that we are going into executive session now. We will return to open session for a final couple of votes and our adjournment where we will also do our ratings for our norms. Um. If you wish to stay on, um, could the clerk put people into a waiting room? If they're planning to stay.
I, I can help. I'm gonna help. I'm gonna help.
Did you see that?
Did you see that?
We can go in, uh, I'll still make this motion. We'll go into executive session. Obviously, we can do the um, the minutes and I'll, I'll look up uh, one of the past motions to, to see how, how the language is different. Cause the other thing is if it, if it's calling the correct s- uh, section of open meeting law.
Right, so while, while you're looking at that, I believe that it's the, it's the one word at the last sentence of the motion. When we say non-union, it actually just reads with union personnel. It starts, the, the, he starts for to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations. It should say with union personnel, but you can double check the language there on that.
Double checks the language with past motions? Is that what you mean?
Actually, no, actually, we'll just go straight to the open meeting. That's where that's pulled.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, there was three different, there's three different laws that we use. So that was, I'm thinking that it's just a um, the typo or it should be union, not non.
It should read negotiations with union personnel. And we go into it and having you check it again, member Sarah Pecot.
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll check it while we're doing the minutes.
Okay, so we have a request and a motion. Is there a second? All right, let's have a roll call, please.
For Davis?
Yes.
Member Daisy?
Yes.
Member Sarah Pecot?
Yes.
Member Stein?
Yes.
Member Hennessy?
Yes.
Member Labonte?
Yes.
Member Agna?
Yes. Hmm, yes. Okay, so again, a reminder that we are going into executive session now. We will return to open session for a final couple of votes and our adjournment where we will also do our ratings for our norms. If you wish to stay on, um, could the clerk put people into a waiting room? If they're planning to stay.
I, I can help. I'm gonna help. I'm gonna help.
Did you see that?